Size of the packets these days.
After all these years, you didn't know that, Steve?
No, I always would sit here and...
No wonder there's like outliving quotes and everything down here.
Hello, everybody. Welcome to the July nine, twenty twenty four Golden City Council Study Session. We have not only a packed study session tonight, but a fairly busy regular council meeting afterwards. There is no public comment for study sessions, so anybody that would like to make public comment for a regular meeting, that is scheduled to convene at seven o'clock tonight, so you can go take a dinner break and come on back. First item on the study session is the Heart of Golden Police and Municipal Building overview and next steps. Steve, Carly, you want to lead us up?
Yes, thank you. So we're really here to really talk about the Heart of Golden as an overall project and the police and city building as a project that's part of the overall Heart of Golden. And so want to make sure that even people that haven't heard of this project can understand where this came from and what the pieces leading up to it are, as well as really understanding what where we're at in this process and what the next steps are. So this first slide, the project really aims to make the Clear Creek Corridor more usable and desirable for residents while providing needed space for police and city services. So the whole time that this has been a project, the focus has really been on what residents want to see in the Creek Corridor and really knowing that the Creek Corridor is one of the main iconic places of Golden and how can we make it more usable for our residents and a place that we can be even more proud of in future years. So that's what the project really has aimed to do. Almost. There. It is the green. Let's try this one. Oh, wait, it looks like it woke up. No. Sorry, guys. It's not working, I'm sorry. So this is the area that we have referred to as the Heart of Golden area as this project has happened. So the west zone really has the community center and the water treatment area, as you can see, that's in the red. And then the blue area is the central zone, which is where City Hall currently is and the City Annex Building. And then the east zone is this yellow area, which is the former Coors property that the city acquired and really provided the opportunity to open up more of the corridor for this project and for residents into the future. Next slide. So this is really a timeline of how this began, and it looks like the numbers are a little jumbled on the screen. But it starts in nineteen sixty when City Hall was first built. And then in two thousand and six is when we first built the shops for the city. And so that's really when space started to become an issue for our internal services. And so the shops building was constructed. And then in twenty eleven, the Clear Creek Corridor Plan was worked on, which I know a lot of the community participated in, really started the conversation on what do we want the corridor to look like? What is the future of Clear Creek? But in two thousand and eleven, it really was a different conversation than it is today with tubing not being as common and a lot of really big factors not being in play as much in twenty eleven there. So then, moving forward, we began building more kind of buildings to accommodate space of staff and city needs with also leasing space, which is the at the visitor center in the Annex Building. In two thousand and eighteen, we conducted a space need study that really looked at where can the city have space for the people that we have and what does the future look like and how can we plan ahead for that? So that really went with this Clear Creek Plan as far as what do we wish we could have and where does this leave us? And then with the proper the Coors property opening up, it really was the opportunity to capitalize on these needs that we've had of making it more usable for residents in the Creek Corridor and having some space issues addressed from a city perspective. And then kind of going up to today, we had an additional space study. The Heart of Golden Plan became more of a conversation throughout the community. And then right now and today, we're looking at a design team for the police and city building. So the corridor needs and vision, we really looked at kicking off this Heart of Golden Plan and what do residents want to see within the Creek Corridor in twenty twenty? So not in twenty eleven, but now with all the new kind of stresses on the Creek Corridor, what are the needs of the residents and what do they want to see? And so one of the main takeaways from that was they want to see more open space and gathering places and more usable and special for residents specifically. Next slide. There's one more back. So this engagement, as I said, started in twenty twenty in the thick of kind of COVID, looking at different ways of getting people involved, having in-person events, online surveys, meetings. We had walking tours and feedback events. I know lots of people on council were on council or participating as community members during this time, pop-up feedback stations, and really kept hearing remove the buildings and relocate services so that the Creek Corridor was for residents and not city buildings. Replacing the buildings with open spaces, natural features, gathering spaces. One of the big things that we heard through that process was no housing in the Creek Corridor, no private development in the Creek Corridor. And that was very loud and clear from people that there was no interest in pursuing any housing or private development in the Creek Corridor. So then looking at kind of our space needs side of things. Currently, we do not have suitable space for police and city services. They're dispersed, dysfunctional, in need of repair, ineffective at meeting residents' current and future service demands. So you can see a few pictures here. Really, we try to use as much space as we can. Lots of space that people work in as storage for the police department especially. Just not a lot of flexibility in meeting spaces. And looking ahead into the future, just not a lot of ways of accommodating different technologies or any sort of flexibility in work. She changed it? Yeah, thanks. And so with the buildings, it was really that they're outdated, unsecure and effective. A lot of security concerns with current buildings. The buildings weren't built for the purposes we're using them for. One of the ways this is showcased is electricity in this building, using electricity for all of the needs of the police department. We've had to kind of redirect a lot of the electricity for the police technology uses. And then there's not enough for other things. So it really kind of throws off the electricity in the whole building and it's really hard to add any new electrical uses throughout the building. Lack of security, separation of police and city functions, spreading services across multiple buildings, and not addressing current service demands. Meeting sustainability goals in this current building would be extremely costly and likely never going to happen. The the way the amount of money it would take to make these buildings meet sustainability goals that council has set in the past would be financially irresponsible. It would be very, very difficult to achieve those goals. So we really learned this information through the space studies that were done, as I said, in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-three. So we kind of did that before and after COVID analysis. Really find finding that the collaboration between departments was a real problem. The storage, as I said, lack of flexibility, aging and insufficient electrical systems, poor indoor air quality, lack of suitable spaces for people and equipment, and insufficient poorly insulated walls and rough spaces. So then we look, sorry, towards what changed or what kind of brought this to more of a conversation, which was the opportunity. So in twenty nineteen, Molson Coors put their land up for sale on the office building that was currently there. And it really provided this opportunity to free up the corridor by relocating the police and city services. In addition, it was really important to council at the time to control the future of the property instead of it being a private developer, knowing that there were big changes in this area, surrounding the area in Golden in general, and that this could be a really large private development if the city did not purchase it. So that was one of the factors that was strongly considered. And then also, as it is stance now, really looking at the opportunity to improve and revitalize the property and the area, which is currently not an area that people go to a lot of the time. And so also during the city's due diligence period of looking at this property, found that the building was not going to meet the needs of the city and not be a good option to move forward. And that was when the city decided to not use that building moving forward. So again, with this opportunity came these ideas of what are the community benefits that this presents? And so it's transform the corridor into the residents' vision, improve customer service, address current and long-term needs, construct the police and city buildings without raising taxes, look at the cost of renovation versus building, the cost of construction now versus the cost later. Really look at better security, supporting recruitment and retention, and really meeting those sustainability goals, like I said. So looking at some of the options that were considered, we identified some of these goals at the time of what is a strategic investment? What can we accomplish without raising taxes? What improves customer service, better security, transforms the corridor? Some of these key goals that I've talked about. So the options that we looked at were remodeling existing and leasing additional city space, completing renovation of the Coors Building, which obviously was an option for a short period of time, renovate the city building and build a police building, and then build a police and city building. And you can see, looking at some of our goals that we were looking to accomplish, the one that met most of the goals that we had or all of the goals that we had was to build a police and city building with kind of limited ability to meet the goals with the other options. And so that was really some of the thought process that council, as you all know, went through as we were going deciding which option fit the best for the goals that we had for the corridor. Some of the costs at the bottom here were, you know, they're not exact costs. One of the things we're looking at with the sixty-five million for the police and city building is we're really looking more that it's going to be closer to sixty million and that we're really looking at as pushing that as low as we can. Oh, okay. I don't think there's much I can do about that. So...
Can you just say them out loud?
I can. So the the first option, the remodel of existing and lease additional space is thirty million. The Coors Building was forty-five million. And then the renovate the city building, build police was fifty million. And then build a police and city building was sixty-five on this. And as I said, we're really looking at it being more closer to sixty for the final numbers. And it was just an estimate to at that point in time to kind of move forward with. We asked our project manager, our TAIC, who we've been working with, to provide more comparative data to other cities who are building city facilities around this time or have recently built city facilities. So for example, Lone Tree, Erie, Aspen, looking at per square foot how much it's costing to build and what our budget is comparative to those places. And right now, our per square square foot cost is coming in at about average and we're pushing to get that below average. So our our budget is really looking at that average amount that cities are paying for construction during this time.
Before you move off the slide, can you just repeat the costs, just so people hear them a couple of times?
Sure. So the first option is thirty million, the second option was forty-five million, the third option fifty million, and then the fourth option sixty million.
I got a question on that before you move on. What even limited transforms the corridor work could be done if we renovated this building? Because I'm surprised that there's even anything listed there.
I think the idea was that it could be limited because of the ability to build police on the other side and that maybe there would be some space that we could use.
Oh, I see.
He means the first.
No, I did mean that column, so the third column. So that includes building a police building over there.
Right.
And so maybe there's some limited ability, like if parts of that got torn down instead of renovated.
Or different uses, those sorts of things, yeah.
Okay, but, yeah, I almost think it's deceptive.
That it's not limited at all, yeah.
Well, that it's, yeah, that it's not available at all. Essentially, it's not available at all.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. So then we really, looking at that, comparing the options, look settled on this conclusion, the solution being constructing a police and municipal building on the prop in the former Coors property means that we can relocate city services and be able to use the corridor for residents' needs. And so I think this really came into play, looking at what is makes financial sense and for a long-term solution and provide meets the most goals that we compared to other options. So this shows some of the things that we've talked about that makes this the viable option that we've settled on, and that's we can transform the corridor to a point of pride for residents, we can improve customer service efficiency and sustainability, and it's the most effective way to meet sustainability goals. The cost that we can build the police and city building without raising taxes, that a lot of the options were almost as expensive and would still require significant funding to accomplish. Construction costs for a police and city building increase all the time, as we've seen with some of the numbers in the past. And looking ahead, that the short-term solutions have only partially addressed the needs of the city in the past. So some of the next steps. Tonight, council is considering the award of the design team, a contract for design. The short-term things that would be next steps would be additional community engagement throughout the design process of the police and city building to ensure it meets residents' needs, create and share visuals and renderings, finalize the a detailed project budget, and council considers funding for the construction of the building without raising taxes. And then more longer term would be construction of the building and extensive outreach and engagement to build consensus on more of those amenities throughout the corridor. I think, you know, this whole project, as it's been going on over the years, it's really been a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to enhance the community and really achieve goals that we've had for a long time as far as making the Creek Corridor more usable for residents, more of a point of pride, and move city services into a consolidated area so that it really reflects the values and wishes of the community. And myself and Steve are here to answer questions and city manager Varco as well.
Thank you, Carly. Steve, did you want to add anything before we go to questions or?
No, thank you, sir.
Bummer. In that case, we have to go to questions. Anybody? Don, go ahead.
Yeah, just to reiterate, how did some departments going to thirty-two-hour work week and work from home get folded into the space study? Since some of that stuff's more recent even than twenty twenty-three.
Yes. So the second space study we did, we really looked at just having flexible spaces that anyone could use that's working, so not having set offices of people, really having it be flexible spaces that people could come in and use for meetings or to work in, and looking more towards that model instead of people having set individual spaces. So by looking at things in that way, we were able to reduce the size that we needed significantly so that we were able to just have space that was usable and not necessarily more space.
So the cost that you've provided, Carly, in the in the model, if we were to construct a new building, we would no longer need the annex and what the planning department is currently occupying. Is there an offset included or would that bring us under sixty million?
That would bring us under, it's not included.
Okay.
Although during the Heart of Golden process, it could be difficult or awkward to dispose of the fourteen forty-five Tenth Street building because of the way it interacts with the water treatment plant and everything down there. The annex, of course, is very clearly a property that the city would have no need of and should should consider selling as a as an offset or to invest in the corridor.
Thank you for that reminder. Lisa?
I have a quick question. Carly, thank you. This was a great outline, great timeline for folks who are just jumping in and need the facts in a clear, concise presentation. I just want to confirm that when the residents were speaking about the corridor and improving it, there was not talk about increasing visitors. This was a vision for residents to improve their experience. Is that correct?
It is correct. That's been a pretty consistent message that we've heard throughout the process is that we want this to be usable space for residents, knowing that visitors will use our spaces and looking at the ways to address those impacts, but that they're not the target audience for this area and that we really want this area to be usable for residents.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Thanks. You can't dovetail any on that. My recollection from four years ago was there was maybe an emphasis on features and amenities that felt like it was a little bit more like trying to attract more people into the corridor. And, you know, is that kind of where maybe some of this started a little bit? Yeah, I I think it looks like this is a very different presentation than than what we would have seen four years ago.
Yeah.
I remember one, the the COVID, the pre-COVID COVID one, where everybody looked around nervously at each other while standing two inches apart.
Yes.
Probably not super ideal, but it it seems to me like that, you know, we've in backing off that and looking at and kind of taking a look at some of the things that people wanted in terms of more natural spaces, natural features, gathering spaces. It means that, you know, some people have been asking me, well, what happened to our our planning for that central? I wonder if you could just sort of reiterate a little bit more kind of what our thinking is in terms of the timeline of when we would look at those types of amenities and what might happen to this building?
Yeah.
If we were no longer using it.
Yeah, I think what from what we've heard in the past, the buildings are part of what's kind of hindering the goals that people have stated before, kind of focus on open space and natural spaces. But as you said, with time, things change. You know, we in two thousand and eleven, the corridor was looked at without tubing being something that people did. And then in twenty twenty, the whole corridor was looked at slightly different. And today, I think visitor impacts and what makes spaces for residents and how can we create amenities that residents want is different than it was in twenty twenty, as you said. So I think engagement would probably be next year and it would be focused on what does that mean exactly to our community? And what do resident-focused amenities, how can we make that happen? And what can we do to make this a place for our community and not just to attract more people? And so I think that that would really be kind of the cornerstone of that engagement would be that's what we've heard in the past and talking more about that and what does that mean to people? So while we haven't decided exactly what would happen to this building with confirmation, I think it's part of this evolution of a conversation of what people want and making sure it's what the current residents of Golden want and that it's today's vision and not twenty twenty's vision and not two thousand and eleven's vision, but really looking at us as a attractive place that people love to come.
Okay, I think that's really helpful, and I know that was one of the the concerns that a lot of people talked to me about was was, you know, are we going to end up accidentally inviting even more visitors without really taking into account resident concerns? Can I follow up with one more question?
Sure.
The actually, Rob had mentioned the 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 benefits or the potential financial impacts of the Public Works Building and in the annex. The the other thing we haven't talked about or wasn't really mentioned was was the ancillary space around where the the City Hall and the police complex would go. Can you talk a little bit about what the potential opportunities are there? Because I think that's important, both to understand some of city council's goals and possibly the financial impact of this.
Yeah.
Sure. So thank you, councillor. It's it's a question that has come up many times. Under the the current direction where we may need property on the north side of Tenth Street for the interim period as surface parking for the Phase One building, there may be less short-term opportunities, but council's conversation has been pretty clear that over time, ideally, all of the property on the north side of Tenth Street would be a council conversation as to should we hold it? Should we partner with other people or should we dispose of it for various types of buildings, but including workforce housing, mixed-use type buildings? One of the big conversations, I think it was councillor Brown though, how the what I call the main parking lot between Archer and Vezquez, how that property in conjunction with a building on the south side of Tenth Street would really serve to create the appropriate vital street edges and land uses to to help anchor that that east end. So the timing of it will be something that council will have to deal with, that some of the outlying lots you might want to do sooner. Some of the main lot, though, would depend on the parking solution and you deciding when is the right time. But the vision from council seems to have always been there are community-based uses, many of which that would have, all of which that would have an economic return, some a greater economic return than others. But that we should be looking at that approximately four acres on the north side of Tenth Street as partnerships to meet community goals.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
We have just a couple of minutes left. Let's knock them out. Don?
On this picture that's on the screen, and I'm looking at it on my screen, I'm a little confused by what's the building adjacent to the history building? It looks like the building we're sitting in with its with the same footprint that it has now, as opposed to a footprint where it would, I don't know, not include fire? Am I just confused?
That's a twenty twenty existing conditions.
Yeah.
And yet it shows the new building on the east end.
No, that's the old building.
It actually shows the old building.
That's the old building.
Yeah.
Okay. So a couple of things around controlling the narrative. One is I like, I would like an update that shows what the proposed corridor would look like. And I'm also a little uncomfortable about the use of the words can be improved as opposed to shall be. I I really want to commit that if we build on the east end, that we shall do some things to include tear this down. I think that it would be unbelievably disruptive if we somehow came up with a proposal in which that did not happen. And I don't I don't really want to see it even see the light of day. So that that's one thought on controlling the narrative. If we really say that this could be transformational, then let's say so.
And I think that's just something we have not gotten direction from council on yet. And so that's the reason.
I know, and I keep bringing it up. And I will keep bringing it up until we provide that direction.
I hear you.
I'm seeking that direction that we provide that. And I know we're running out of time, so I guess I will stop there.
Patty, did you?
Yeah, I've got two quick ones.
Yeah.
First, I totally agree with Don about not if we are like moving forward with this, I think should come with a commitment that we are retaining this land for open space, park space, gathering spaces, and not for buildings, whether they're private or public. So I I am in agreement with that, although I I know that there is more discussions to be had. So my other question is, you know, there's a lot, I mean, clearly have a lot of growth going on in Golden. We've got the clayworks, mines is growing, the demands from our city government are going to continue to increase. Does do the space analysis that was done last year account for increased demand on our city employees and our city services?
I think that's a great point to bring up, and I think that's why we're really focused on flexibility, and we want this to be a building that can last fifty-plus years and can accommodate lots of different styles of work and needs from the community. And so I think that we have thought of that, and as we move forward through design, will be something that's top of mind, is how can this building be usable and and current and something that everyone can have for many, many years.
Thank you.
Okay, any last questions before we wrap this up? Thank you, Carly. Steve? Next on the agenda is historic preservation policy and engagement. Lauren and Rick. Thank you, council.
No.
Lauren will be presenting tonight.
Yeah.
All right. All right, thank you. So what we're here tonight to discuss is the city's historic preservation policy and engagement study. Council's asked this evening to provide initial feedback regarding phases, Phase One and Phase Two of the study, and any additional thoughts on the engagement plans presented. The study has three phases which are scheduled to conclude in the fourth quarter of this year. So the study has been identified in the city's twenty twenty-four action plan, strategic action plan, and it was initiated by Historic Preservation Board and City Council in order to to have two major goals. The first would be to holistically review the city's current policies and procedures for historic preservation and engage with the community to receive input on preservation policy options that could best fit Golden's needs and goals in the future. So Phase One of the study was kicked off last month with a staff-led tour around the city's three historic districts. The tours were attended by the city's consultant team, Logan Simpson, members of Historic Preservation Board, members of Planning Commission, and community members. Another key part of Phase One are stakeholder interviews, which have just concluded. The stakeholders interviewed were area architects, former applicants for historic preservation projects, they were also district property owners and residents, and former Historic Preservation Board members, many of which were involved in some of the initial plans for this. The interviews have given the consultants a broad understanding of the various viewpoints and experiences in the community with preservation and our current policies, and the consultants have already identified that there is a lack of a cohesive community vision around preservation and would like to address that in the first open house. The next milestone for this phase is a public open house, which will be held in two weeks on July twenty-second at the Golden Community Center at four P M. The open house is expected to give the community background on the project, and and it will have an exercise that will help shape the community's vision for historic preservation policy. Phase One will conclude with a steering committee meeting, and the steering committee is a group that will be comprised of community members, mostly identified through the stakeholder interview process. The this group will review the public engagement results, give input, and help shape the policy choices and options of approaches that will be presented for public feedback as part of Phase Two of the study. Phase Two of the study will begin this coming August, and it will have an analysis of the opportunities and choices identified from the community's feedback, from the community feedback that's been received. The public feedback and policy choices will be presented at a second open house scheduled for September twenty-third at Golden Community Center at four P M. The content of Phase Two's policy choices will factor into the specific public engagement plans for this phase beyond the open house and online engagement efforts. Also in Phase Two, the Historic Preservation Board will meet to discuss the the potential policy choices and provide input as a group during this phase. And finally, the steering committee, along with the consultant team and staff, will meet to review the public input received on the policy choices from Phase Two in order to shape the recommendations report that will be part of Phase at the final phase of Phase Three. So that phase will begin is planned for to begin in October with the completion of the recommendations report, and that recommendations report will be formally reviewed for adoption or any changes by Historic Preservation Board, and then passed along to city council with their recommendation moving forward. So the recommendation report could include a number of next steps for the city to take. The goal of the study is really to figure out what those next steps are. So just some ideas would be revisions to the city's Chapter eighteen fifty-eight, which is of in the Golden Municipal Code, which has all the policies and procedures for historic preservation. The study could recommend new or revised historic preservation architectural review guidelines or standards. We our current set was adopted, well, was supposed to be adopted in two thousand eight, and it's we still have it today. It could also include municipal code standards that involve changes to the zoning code that would impact the areas that include historic districts or historically designated structures. It could include property maintenance regulations for properties in historic districts, or it can include incentive programs such as grant programs, loan programs, or other formal recognition programs that could incentivize preservation in the community. So we look forward to the upcoming open house on July twenty-second very soon, and welcome council's direction. Questions or input on the study or community engagement plans presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, do you want to add anything before we go to questions?
Nope. Ready for questions?
All right. Patty?
Thank you. I've got several questions. All right. On the stakeholder interviews in the steering committee, like, how were the stakeholders identified that that were interviewed?
The stakeholder stakeholders were chosen from a number of known folks that come to meetings, recent applicants for preservation projects. We we interviewed folks that maybe had some struggles or or or, you know, talked about that they some things, issues they might have had. We wanted the consultants to talk to a broad range of of opinions and make sure they had a broad perspective from folks that very much advocate for preservation or folks that have been through the process. We also made sure to interview a number of former Historic Preservation Board members because they have that experience working on the individual cases and have a broader view of preservation. So we identified those that way and also looked at area architects or several architecture firms in the city that work on preservation projects, and they also have a unique view of preservation. So that's how they were all identified.
Okay. So in the steering committee, I think, you know, we've seen, you know, not just in Golden, but really everywhere, the makeup of a committee very much influences the output, the outcome. And so I'm really, I'm wondering how how the steering committee was chosen, who who chose it, who and who is on it?
So the steering committee has not been selected yet. I'm really leaning on the consultant team after they've sort of interviewed all the various stakeholders to give give us a sort of a a neutral view of the various stakeholders that were interviewed, and with the goals of putting together a committee that has various viewpoints and having ensuring those viewpoints are all represented on the committee that is eventually chosen. But I plan on the consultant really helping us put that committee together to ensure that we have sure that there's broad, there can be broad consensus.
Was everybody who wanted to be interviewed as a stakeholder, or did they get that chance?
I, you know, we did reach out to a number of folks. I'm not sure that everybody we reached out to took us up on the opportunity to interview. We also, we also had folks that were recommended to us, and we ensured that those folks were received invitations. We could also, if there were other folks that were interested in in sort of further in being involved in whether stake steering committee or additional interviews, you know, we're still at an early point in the study, we could still do those interviews if there are folks that were not that felt that would like to be heard individually.
So I think I sent you, I had two people.
Yes.
Approached me wanting to be interviewed, and so I pass those names on to you. I just want to make sure that.
And they were both interviewed.
Fantastic, thank you.
Done.
Yeah, when we redid our zoning code and went to form-based zoning, we did a survey of a lot of properties to define what was the character of Golden, and and we came up with these different overlays. And I made the point in our last council meeting around historic preservation that we seem to preserve properties that people choose to preserve. And I'm wondering, are we going to get out of this process a better understanding of what we in fact want to preserve and what we can let go? Because right now, it's just not clear. I mean, I sit up on the dais, I hear the arguments, you know, Joe Blow lived here, Joe Blow was famous in the day, and therefore this house is worth preserving. That doesn't sell me. So are we going to get a lot more clarity around what this city values and what we are going to actively choose to preserve versus being reactive, which is the way we've been?
So I think the first step of the study, really setting forth the goals or the vision or, excuse me, the vision of preservation and what the what the community wants to preserve is a really important first step of the study. And that will further inform what kind of what kind of policies or goals that we would would move forward with, once we've heard kind of from everybody, to see what is important in the community. But I think having a cohesive vision around what what preservation means to the city is important for us to set forth future goals or or any documents or updates to the Municipal Code. So we we really, it it seems to me, when I was looking at sort of how the original districts were formed and the original preservation policies were set forth, the districts were really set forth geographically, they weren't really set, you know, there wasn't really a cohesive context set forth for each district. And so we have the legacy of that today in that we don't really have a cohesive vision for preservation or document that communicates that. So this study is really to do that.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
The other thing that came out of our, you know, study and then a lot of staff time on code changes was they didn't pass legal muster. And so we ended up having sort of another round of rewrites. How complete is this study going to be in terms of being code-ready versus this is just the prelude to yet another round to get code-ready?
So I would foresee this study as the prelude to helping us figure out what code changes we might need to make or what kind of documents we may need to update. Updating those documents is is detailed, it takes a lot of time, and we need often need to hire experts to do those updates that or engage with legal staff to to do those rewrites. So I would foresee the study directing us in how to how to make any changes to those documents and would give council, historic board, direction from the community on what changes need to be made to improve or change the program if desired.
If I could follow up as well, though, there are elements of it that we could do in-house. So for example, Chapter eighteen fifty-eight, we have in-house legal talent that's familiar with historic preservation code language and could help us write that internally, but it would be separate from the actual study that's creating the vision.
Thank you. I have other questions, but I'll defer. Lisa?
I just have a quick question, Lauren. Thank you. Is it still okay for residents to come forward and ask to be identified as a stakeholder and for you to interview them? Or is it too late for that process?
So those interviews have have really been wrapped up. We will be starting, we will have an open house coming up, and we can identify folks at that open house that would like to have an individual discussion with our consultant. If there are anybody out there that feels they'd like to participate in that, we can certainly accommodate that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I'm going to circle back, dovetailing a little bit on on Don's last question. In the staff memo, you indicate that staff and the consultant are working on specifics regarding outreach for Phase Two and welcome council's input. So with that lead-in, do we have some input that we can provide to Lauren and Rick on the outreach for Phase Two, which is getting toward Don's point about codifying what we're we're trying to accomplish here? So do we, do we want to let staff run this like we normally run public outreach, or do we have any specifics that we want to add to the the mix here?
Well, just I did weigh in on a memo to staff and said, did you look at our community engagement plan as a way to, you know, give the consultants new ideas? We have Sarah, she's sitting here, and she was part author author of the community engagement plan. I feel like we've let that just sit on the shelf, and we don't consciously bring it forward and act upon it. So I don't have specifics, but I I did also say in my memo, I don't think our sherrets and public engagements are getting a broad swath of the population, and we're not getting, you know, a lot of of input. So I think we need to try something different. Pop-ups, I think, have some value, and we saw that recently with a park discussion down at the Triangle near Domino's. So I I guess I would recommend some pop-ups. And even if we get input from, you know, outsiders, I'm not opposed to people, you know, people say, I come to Golden because of, you know, that's, to me, that's valid input. So that's my addition.
Adding to that, what I've what I noticed on the the tour, which was mid-afternoon, and the upcoming open house, which is four in the afternoon, don't really lend themselves to people who work full-time. And I know you're trying to get like a wide variety, but pop-ups in the evening outside of, you know, like Astor House in Miners Alley, you know, or other other areas, just or walking down, walking down the historic streets and seeing who was who's outside and wants to talk to you, finding stuff at people in the evenings. Or I know it's almost, I mean, a lot of the historic districts have block parties, so find out when the block parties are and go. historic districts have block parties, so find out when the block parties are and go, go talk to the residents there. I think if we just keep doing the same, you know, open houses, we're not going to get the engagement that, that we want. And also, if this process doesn't come back with, you know, more teeth and something very different than what we've been doing, I don't know how much of a success we could consider it. If it's just saying, yep, we're doing great, let's continue as we've been going. We've not done a great job of historic preservation in the last several years. And I was, I'm hoping that this will turn the tide and give us some more, like some more authority and requirements rather than just encourage applicants and encourage owners.
Bill?
Thanks. I think dovetailing on that, when, when I look at this and I'm trying to understand the, the purpose of it and I look at the, the goals on our website say to eliminate uncertain, the engagement study goals to eliminate uncertainty or confusion about the purpose of historic preservation goals. Okay. To improve meaning and content of the existing preservation ordinance and propose changes that clarify how preservation is best accomplished in Golden. Some of these seem like they're maybe geared to address some of the specificity that, that Don's interested in, in terms of understanding, you know, what, what types of things, you know, are considered historic versus nonhistoric or whatever the, that sort of language looks like. But I, I think to Patty's point, I'm, you know, looking, there was also a 2018 preservation plan. We've talked about it. When I talk to people about historic preservation, typically what they're saying is that it's a core foundational part of the community. We're one of the longest-standing cities in Colorado and, and it's a lot of the milieu and the environment that, that we kind of bought into and came here for, whether we grew up here or whether we moved here later. And so what I'm not sensing out of this is, is there some overall direction? Are we just assuming that we're going to end up trying to get more preservation or better preservation or more significant preservation than we have? Because it just seems to be talking around a lot of this stuff and engaging people. Is the engagement to try to drum up and have people say the same things that we've been hearing for a long, long time? I mean, our case even a couple of weeks ago seemed to be an argument between people who both felt like we needed more preservation. One party was going to go the other direction with it, but like, that was conceptually like, it was an argument over, you know, who's doing more preservation? Neither of us. Okay. This doesn't tell me that the impetus of this is, is not just structural to Don's point, but also policy-related in terms of the community's saying, like, time and again, we want a better, more comprehensive preservation system. So help me understand how this forms into that, if, or if it does.
Well, I'll start off and Lauren can, can pick up as well. I think, I think the idea of historic preservation is something that Goldenites embrace, but I think what that entails, there's differing opinions on. And I think that's what we're really trying to find out. I think there are people who, who like the idea but would not like necessarily the regulations and other folks who would like the regulations and, and hard standards. And then there's the divide between the people who actually live in historic districts and would have to abide by any regulations versus the rest of the community who would not and would just like it to be preserved. So I think we want to hear from everybody and give council a full picture of where different parts of the community are in order to make a good decision on a, on a vision going forward. Because I think there are, I, I know you're, you're hearing that people value it and I think they do, but I think it's, it's more about what, what level of value do they have? And more specifically, I think to, to Counselor Cameron's point, you know, what, what is worth preserving and what is not worth preserving? We don't know that either. Because I think people could come with anything and say, this should be a local landmark. And, and there's, there's not really adequate guidance. Is it age-related? Is it, is it people-related? Is it, there's, there's a whole host of things and considerations in those, in those situations. So, so really, I know that it's valued, but I think we really need a common vision out of this in order to, to really get the guidelines, standards and regulations correct. And I don't think we can assume that people will say that we want regulations. I think some people will, but maybe not the majority and we have to be prepared for that as well. And that's still ultimately a council decision, but we want to report back to you what we hear.
Okay. Done.
I don't really see in here what the measurable outcomes are for the consultant. And I wonder if you could comment on both the cost of this contract, their measurable, truly measurable outcomes? And, you know, how do we measure success? Because I'm worried that it's just, they could, they could hold the meetings, they could give us a summary of the public comments and, you know, thank you. What measurable outcome are we looking for?
So the study costs $40,000 and we hired a consultant that was a planning firm that also had preservation experience. And we were very particular about ensuring that there was a group of planners working on this in addition to preservationists to ensure that, that planning and vision piece was a part of this. I think the measurable work product is really the report that details all the engagement that has been, that was held, what, what engagement was held, what we heard, and then makes a series of recommendations with their expertise, working all over the West on a preservation program or options for a preservation program that would meet the community's needs. And I think coming into this, we are thinking, we are, we're not thinking about a predetermined outcome. We're thinking about getting that engagement and hearing from the community in order to make, make that recommendation and not coming into it with any kind of ideas on what we might hear, but being open to listening.
Can I just follow up real briefly?
Sure.
I guess I'm concerned that if, if we get, and as Counselor Fisher pointed out, conflicting input, people want control, don't want control, we could get a report that basically says, here's a pile of recommendations from the community, good luck. As opposed to, here's a pile of recommendations from the community and here's our layer of expertise on top of it and these are the specific recommendations that we would recommend that you take, as opposed to trying to say, be all things to all people.
I think that's why the steering committee aspect of this is really important because we want to ensure that this is, this plan is from the community and, and is something presented to you and Historic Board that the community is, can get behind. And so ensuring that was brought forward from, with the steering committee's expertise over it, in addition to the consultant and staff, is bringing forward something that the broad community can support or at least aspects of it have broad support or the most broad support that it can. But I think that's why it was important to include that steering committee of, of folks that are not staff or the consultant that could act to filter that information.
Thank you.
Can I?
Rick, you wanted to chime in?
I was just going to, just really quickly, I think when we were talking to different consulting companies who, who could perform this study, that was, that was one of the things we communicated that we wanted the most, is a customized solution for Golden. Given Golden's specific characteristics, given the population, the districts that we have, what works best for, for our community? And so we, we forced them to show us examples of when they had done such things. And so I think that's, and that's why we ended up going with Logan Simpson. They were the best able to, to answer the fact that it's not, there's not just one version of historic preservation out there, that you have to really listen to the community and, and have a customized approach.
Lisa, and then Patty?
I'm going to circle back quickly to the question at hand about community engagement, specifically in Phase Two. You have listed here online engagement efforts. Do you have any detail about what that online engagement effort will be?
So in, in speaking with the consultant and they, they do these kinds of studies all over, all over the West, they have an online tool that they can use that sort of mimics an open house. So if somebody's not able to attend an open house, they can still get that same information and then we can quantify those same questions or opinions in this, you know, with the same boards and the same information. So that, I forget the name of the tool, but it was a concierge maybe or something along, something along those lines. But we also have guiding Golden. We also have other ways to engage with the public. The historic districts have hundreds of properties. This, this policy will impact a lot of property in ours. We, we want to ensure that there's a variety of ways for the folk, for the community to engage with us on this study.
Thank you.
Ben?
Sorry. So again, coming back to the steering committee makeup, because it sounds like they're going to have a lot of power here. How are, I'm, I'm a little concerned about how that is getting chosen and how public that is going to be. And, you know, it's, they're, they're going to be the ones who layer on the Golden opinion, then I want that to be very, very public and I want the participants of that to be very, very public and all of their meetings to be very public and recorded. I think, and, you know, you've talked about recent applicants and I think you should go back further as well and get some applicants, because recent applicants, there have been a lot of essentially scrapes and, or with, you know, keeping very little and then building bigger. If you go back further, you've got a lot more, a lot more owners who kept most, if not all of their, of their home and followed the intent, not just the letter of H P B. So I would encourage you to open up the stakeholder interviews and go out and seek people who have successfully, who, who have successfully maintained the historic preservation of their historic homes.
Any last, did you need any additional feedback from council or did you get what you needed tonight?
I think I have what I need tonight. So we'll be back, we will take all this input and communicate that with our consultant to ensure that we include these comments in our upcoming plans and hope to see folks at our July 22nd open house.
Great.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Finally, for tonight's study session is the strategic strategies we've spent a day for transportation demand management in downtown Golden. Rick, you're still here.
And here I am.
Good evening, partners.
So you are the new face. Why don't you introduce yourself to council?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Steph Papernow. I am a city planner with the long-range planning team with the planning department. And as mentioned, I'm here tonight to talk about transportation demand management and a potential strategy for the city of Golden. So just to highlight the purpose of this evening's conversation, we're really looking to align internally on goals and measure, measurable goals for what a TDM program could look like for the city. And we want to also align on potential strategies as to how we can meet those goals. Really drilling in, we want your specific input and feedback on a potential required TDM program for new development and redevelopment and what areas of the city we would potentially require that. And then we're also looking at potentially a voluntary program for existing employers or employment centers or some maybe hybrid of the two. A portion would be mandatory and a portion would be voluntary. So just to start, what is TDM or transportation demand management? So really what this boils down to is encouraging people to get out of single occupancy vehicles and onto more sustainable modes of travel, whether that be transit, walking, biking or carpooling. And really doing that through a variety of strategies, whether it's incentives, educational programs, physical infrastructure, so protected bike lanes, which might encourage people to get out of their vehicles. But really it's providing a menu of strategies or even disincentives to get people out of their SOVs, single occupancy vehicles. And so I just wanted to highlight a few key strategies. We've really broken these out into three buckets. So first we have education and incentive programs. So for example, the city of Bozeman has provided a guaranteed ride home. So for anyone who chooses an active form of transportation, say they're biking to work and they get a flat tire, they can call an Uber or Lyft and the city of Bozeman will reimburse them for that trip. Other places like Atlanta, Georgia are providing cash incentives for people who have been traveling in a single occupancy vehicle and are switching to a more sustainable mode of travel. The second key bucket is infrastructure. So on the screen you'll see secure indoor bike parking. So really incentivizing and encouraging developers to add in shower facilities, secured bike parking, and then the physical infrastructure itself, protected bike lanes, trails. And the last bucket we have on the screen is regulations and policy. So a lot of cities and counties are starting to require TDM through their development, whether that be through regulation or city ordinance. So on the left is an example from the city and county of Denver and their model is looking at the type of development as well as square footage as what triggers the TDM. Or in the Bay Area, they have a state regulation that requires employers of over 50 people to, to give their employees commuter benefits. And so overall, we're really looking for a balanced approach to TDM that weighs all of those different buckets that we just highlighted. We think it's very important for there to be some type of requirement and we'll get into that in a little bit more detail in the conversation, but continue to invest in that physical infrastructure as we are doing today and then work with those large employees in the, employers, excuse me, in the community to see how we can get them to provide incentives for their employees as well. And that bucket is really important because as you can see on the screen, the eight largest employers in Golden make up 61% of our full employee workforce. So they have a large opportunity to really influence how people are moving around in Golden and coming into Golden. And I'm not going to read through this list, but I just wanted to highlight some of the efforts that are already ongoing in this space in Golden. So we have the ORE Cart, which is a collaboration with Mines. We also just had Bike to Work Day recently to encourage people to, to get on their bikes. So a lot of great work is already happening, but we're looking to really formalize and standardize this program. I'm not going to read through these either. These are in your packet, but these are the goals that were included in attachment two so we can talk about those in the conversation. And then lastly, I just wanted to break it out into these kind of five key recommendations that we have at staff. So again, we're looking at implementing some type of regulatory ordinance for new development and redevelopment. We're looking at continuing to fund our bike and pedestrian infrastructure and safety improvements across the city. Looking at adopting a facilities design guide so that as new development comes in, we can help determine what type of facilities are being built in city right-of-way. And then we're looking at developing, like I said, maybe a voluntary program, maybe mandatory, but something that works with existing employers to encourage their employees to choose more sustainable modes of travel. And then lastly, a recommendation to fund the implementation and data collection so that we can monitor the success of this program. So we've broken this effort out into three phases. What we're calling Phase One, which we're in now, is that internal alignment on the goals and strategies. Phase Two will be continued community outreach. And then Phase Three will be developing that specific implementation strategy, which we would come back and discuss as a group in the winter or spring of 2025. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Chair Reed, to guide us through the discussion.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and lead this one off because this is a new area to me. One of the options you gave was regulatory, which I understand, and in the memo it talks about for development and redevelopment. I can understand something similar to our sustainability guidelines where we require things like indoor, you know, bike storage facilities. What other regulatory tools have other cities used to encourage TDM or require it in some fashion?
Most cities use an ordinance as the tool of implementation. And then what varies from city to city is what triggers that requirement. So some cities like Carlsbad in California requires, you're looking at average daily employee trips. So if an employer has 110 or more daily employee trips, that's what triggers their TDM requirements into play. Others like Denver looks at square footage as what triggers that requirement. And then there's a variety of ways you can actually implement that, but most provide But most provide a menu of strategies with a point system based off of what's most impactful. Uh, and how much do those strategies cost?
So it's not directly tied, tied to development or redevelopment. It's tied to employers coming to Golden. So if you had a building that was not owner occupied, that was being developed. We could have requirements in our code for bicycle storage, for example. But because that developer is not the employer, any requirement for, um, R T D passes would have to be to the tenant who is the occupant. Is that how you're envisioning this?
Yeah, it most likely will be through the tenant, um, and who's occupying that building. Um, the example I shared from California in the Bay area was a state law that mandated employers over a certain size to, uh, give their employees a menu of different benefits. So you can do it through that, uh, mechanism as well. But typically it's through new development and redevelopment because we can, uh, we can withheld, withhold the certificate, certificate of occupancy or the building permit in that process. So they kind of build it into that development review process and it's managed that way.
Okay. Were you looking to chime in there, Rick?
I could chime in. I was just going to say it could, it could be both though. I mean, when you're, when you're developing a new building, those considerations need to happen sometimes with the infrastructure itself, right? When the, when you're actually planning out the building. So it could be a combination of working with the employer once they're started on a programmatic level. But as far as the infrastructure, that's something that would have to be planned when the building is, you know, being planned itself. So it could be a storage facility that's required at the time of building, but then later on a transit pass system or something of that nature with the employer.
Great. Thank you. Don, is that a hand up or are you just?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that habit?
No, both. I'm really excited about, um, the menu of options. And the reason I bring that up is because if you go back to your chart that says 61% of all employees are from eight employers. That tells me that regulatory on new builds is marginal. It's going to improve things just on the edges. Uh, with the exception of Coors Tech or Clayworks now, which agreed to T D M in their O D P, if you can't have enough acronyms. I don't see T D M making a big impact unless we really hit the existing. So, um, that's my, my direction would be let's look at that menu. Whether, and you know, obviously voluntary is better incentives could help. And I think that the other reason that that's good is there's a lot of people who don't even buy into T D M. They love their S O V.
Yeah.
They live for their S O V. And so if we can make their experience better, I hate to say it, because somebody else chose to use transit. That's a win, you know, it's not, it doesn't get that person out of the S O V, but somebody got out of an S O V. And, and actually there's nationwide data that says, just real briefly, that people are in support of mass transit because they hope somebody else takes it instead of them. Uh, and I, and I'm right there. But I think if we could have the right incentives for employers, uh, to really make better use of it and make those missing connections like to R T D that much better, uh, that would be my focus, not on regulatory, because I, I just don't see it making a big impact.
But you're still recommending it be voluntary for employers with incentives to encourage them to participate.
With sufficient incentives and if we have a broad enough menu. And I think we also have to, you know, follow, uh, Council Reed's comment about the, the builder versus the user, the owner versus the, you know, we have issues in, in the downtown, um, in the D D A of getting building owners to improve things when they don't really, the benefits accrue to the, the leasing.
Right.
You know, so the benefits need to accrue to the person that, you know, gains the benefit. That's the way I look at it.
Is the major focus on downtown or are we talking about any auto S O V entering the city limits?
The focus, uh, for a potential required program was really looking at downtown plus the South Golden Road corridor. Um, the addition of the South Golden Road corridor was so that the geographic area matched what was coming down the pipeline with the House Bill 1304, which provides that quarter mile buffer around transit. So in this case, it would be the R T D 17 route. Um, so it would match that, uh, geographic area was the original thought, but that's something we want to hear your feedback on.
Continue, Paul.
So if the city, which does not have a lot of land, but if, if we were to find areas for parking that can keep people off South Golden Road and off downtown, would that be part of T D M?
Do you mean adding new parking facilities?
So that people can use a O R cart or a shuttle system or some other system or, uh, park their bike there at the parking lot and ride it in or something that reduces the S O Vs on South Golden Road in downtown.
Typically, from what I've seen, T D M programs include parking management. So making parking more challenging and less available, whether it's through, uh, fees, but not adding new parking, like a kiss and ride type lot near, you know, the W line or something like that. So I would say probably that would not meet our goals, just getting people off South Golden Road. The overarching goal is really a mode shift away from single occupancy vehicles altogether, in my opinion.
That's typically the goal of these programs. I mean, if there's, we can, you know, we're free to do what we want as a city. So if, if that's something the council would like to look into, um, sort of a more, you know, park and ride aspect of it, we can certainly do that. But I think Ms. Paperno is correct that they mostly are about reducing overall single occupancy vehicle trips in the community and not necessarily saying, we want to get them out of this, this place, but it's okay in this place.
Patty?
I've got a couple of questions. All right, so the eight employers that have 61% of the employees, can you talk a little bit about like where they're located? What kind of, are they like, you know, retail restaurants? Are they more the manufacturing? Like, and where physically are they?
Yeah, that list includes School of Mines, which has about 1,500 employees. Uh, that has Jefferson County included. It's the city of Golden itself with about 500 employees. Um, Kong is included on that list with about 150 employees, uh, Clayworks, um, and Coors Brewing. So they're scattered around the city.
So it's not all in one area that would be easy to, to address?
Correct.
Um, and then the South Golden, like the locations of 1304. If I remember correctly, that's not, no longer a requirement. It's just there's incentives that come along with it if we need the reduced parking. Is that?
No, that's, that's, uh, that's not correct. The, the Transit Oriented Communities Bill, the T O C bill, that was an incentive based, switched to an incentive based program. The parking minimums requirement is, is not a, a choice. That's something the state has, has mandated and, and that these quarter mile from, from bus line areas. Yeah, it's, it's so, so essentially it's, it's eliminating parking minimums for multifamily, uh, in these zones. Uh, for new multifamily and for rehab structures and such.
All right.
So that's something we have to comply with. That's why it sort of made sense to do, you know, potentially extend this more, you know, from downtown along the, the gold, the Ford and, and Jackson corridor through South Golden Road. It's not necessary, but it's something we wanted to provide as a, as an option to you all since, you know, it will be more challenging to park over time.
Uh, Paul, I think was next, then Lisa.
You've talked about different organizations that provide incentives such as the School of Mines to use public transit. Is that one of the incentives you have in mind for the six employers? Is that, you know, is that, I don't, I'm trying to put that together with something that's already happening.
Yeah, that could definitely be an option. I think the idea would be to make a menu of options available to employers to choose what makes the most sense for them. Um, but Eco Passes on R T D is something that Mines offers both students and faculty. Um, so that's a very viable option. Um, N R L, the, uh, National Renewable Energy Laboratory provides a shuttle for their employees to travel from Boulder to Golden. Um, so that's just a service that they offer. Um, so encouraging and maybe incentivizing employers to do something like that, um, is kind of what we're thinking.
So that's on your list now for those bigger employers or any employers?
I think it would make the most sense for larger employers, but that's definitely something we would want to provide on that menu.
Thank you. My question is about the large employers, South Golden Road. I did not hear King Supers or Safeway. Are they looped into this proposed project?
So we, we've kind of identified stakeholder outreach as the next phase. We wanted to first align on an overarching strategy and then we'll start to engage with some of those larger employers. So this is not an extensive list. I was just looking at the, we were looking at the largest employers. Um, just as an example of who we would be trying to target.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Phil?
Thanks. Um, I really appreciate all the background and the information in here. I think, um, my, probably the one thing that you can maybe help kind of outline for me is when I look at this, I think it addresses a lot of, um, the goals to try to get people out of, out of S O Vs. I'm sorry. That's not what I hear when people say that. But, um, what I feel like the impacts are when I look in Golden are the, and probably the biggest concern I have and, and the biggest concern that I hear from people is the, the massive congestion that is likely to be coming related to projects like Clayworks. We have Mines building incessantly. We have N R L, who's going to put a billion dollars at our southern door. We have Coors that continues to develop and will be redeveloping their properties. All of these things are going to create potentially significant congestion. When I look at the goals and the objectives, things like reduce S O V commute trips for the city of Golden employees to a certain percentage. I think, how are we going to measure and understand the impacts of actual congestion that are really making it difficult to commute and get through town as opposed? Because I can look at that and say, well, you know, what if the city of Golden employees, you know, we increase the number, but the percentage goes down, you could end up with the same amount of traffic. I keep seeing traffic increasing and increasing and increasing. And one part of it is, is, is the, the concept of how do you convince people to get out of their cars? But the other part is, what are we doing to measure and understand this congestion? Really understand these, these key corridors that are really going to impact traffic? And, you know, to me, the livability of trying to get from the north side of town to the south side of town. I mean, this, imagine like a, you know, a golden super cruise Monday through Friday, eight to five.
Yeah, I'll just, uh, if I could, I'll just, uh, start. I, we, we do have historic, uh, you know, trip counts or, or, uh, vehicle counts on, on most of these corridors that you're naming. And we can compare that as, as we move forward. So, uh, you can see on the public works portion of the website, uh, they do track that. And so that's one way to measure it over time is a historical view of whether or not we're being successful. But to your point, if demand continues to grow, um, it's, it's even more important to make progress on reducing those trips, even if it sustains at the current level. Ideally, we, we actually, you know, reduce congestion from today, you know, looking, looking, looking backwards. But I think, um, at, at the, at the minimum, we need to at least start figuring out how to prevent more increased trips going forward. So that it's a great goal. Um, and we, we do have measurable, uh, numbers to look at over time.
Yeah, I just want to add on too, part of T D M is switching, uh, those trips from single occupancy vehicle trips to other types of modes, more sustainable modes. But it's also looking at shifting when those trips happen, right? So giving people more flexibility, so not everyone is traveling at peak times. It's looking at telework solutions, making sure that there's options for people to maybe avoid a commute trip altogether, which we're piloting here, um, in Golden. And then it's also looking at potentially providing resources through that development phase. So providing a food option, if you're, you know, building a new complex for N R L, do people need to leave during the afternoon to go get lunch? Or do you have those services, the showers, all of those types of facilities on site to reduce the number of trips that need to happen in the first place? So those are all components of T D M.
Scott?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment and maybe Rick, uh, uh, or Stephanie can, uh, chime in. I, I know there were a lot of comments that we received, um, in public comments and in some council comments emails today related specifically to a, a number of local downtown business employers and concerns around, um, free employee parking perhaps being somehow, uh, considered for elimination. I, I just want to make a note there, there is buried within, um, sort of a secondary report associated with the staff memo within an appendix, um, a listing of a, a number of possible strategies to implement. One of those is related to free employee parking. I just want to clarify for the folks that there's a, a level of panic amongst some employers and some employees concerned about the impact that that might have on them from a cost standpoint and a convenience standpoint and a retention perspective. I just want to clarify, this is something that is not something that we are actively pursuing right now. These are a, a whole catalog of, of, of potential solutions that have been identified through some of this research amongst a variety of other communities. And any kind of action is, um, subsequent to this meeting and then nine to 12 months worth of planning outreach with the community and business owners and employees and folks that are commuting in, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to try to allay some of the concerns and some of the fears that might be out there around somehow today in this meeting, council is going to, uh, take away employee parking or, or make major shifts to how we handle parking within the downtown core or other areas. Uh, that is not what we're here to talk about in any level of specificity. And again, there is a lot of outreach to come associated with this, but I just wanted to make that point so folks understand where we are in the process.
So as we've mentioned many times before, study sessions are not an opportunity to vote and set policy. Um, so thank you for that reminder. Um, I will also mention that, um, I don't believe there's anybody on this council who wants to put employees at risk to drive up the cost, especially to low wage employees and to make it difficult for downtown small businesses to continue to function. Um, so obviously a great deal of outreach would have to be done. And there would have to be serviceable alternatives to free parking before we even consider that. And I don't think that's going to happen in my time on council, if ever. But thank you for that. Done.
On the tip of my, okay, measurements. One thing about S O Vs is that they have a single occupancy. Counselor Evans and I were at a community meeting where a young kid brought up the idea of ride share. And if you have two people in a car, it's no longer an S O V. So I would like ride share and some super easy way for people to even consider, um, almost like an on demand. Like, hey, has anybody else gone to King Supers from where I'm at? You know, some sort of really creative process. Unfortunately, since we've just had a worldwide pandemic, people are less likely to, you know, do that. But, um, as recently as in May, I picked up hitchhikers, um, when I was in Arizona. Um, and, you know, we increased the density of our car. And so if we could figure out a way to get S O Vs down by having more people get into cars, I'd encourage that.
I would also mention that, um, being the counselor closest to the high school, uh, anything we can do to work with the school system to increase the number of buses um, or encourage them, which I know we've been trying. But also, um, you know, we don't count as S O Vs the parents dropping off the kids and then coming to get the kids. And frequently those are multiple trips per day with a single car, which is actually worse than a student driving themselves to school. Um, so any thought we can put into future recommendations about that reality that we're facing would be really appreciated.
Definitely.
Patty?
Okay, just a little bit of feedback or I want to slightly disagree with something, uh, Dawn said earlier on the voluntary versus mandatory. I do think we should like actually, or consider requiring and making it mandatory for future developments and for some of the larger things, but make it, make it mandatory, but make them want to do it in terms of like providing the incentives. And then also, um, you know, as you're working through this, I think, you know, there are some, you know, strategies or infrastructures, things that might come up that I don't think would need to wait until the end of, um, the report, like. need to wait until the end of the report, like more bike parking, more secure bike parking. You know, I've seen public locking bike locks where you can pay, you know, a certain amount and your bike is secure for a while, or things like that, that, you know, are not an imposition on anybody, but an amenity that we could provide. And if you, as you're talking to businesses and people, if you hear, you know, employees don't want to walk their bike to work because they go home when it's dark and it's not safe because there's no light. Find out where those lights are and what would make, like, if we can address some of the immediate issues, do those, address like some of the low hanging fruit and not have to wait until the end of the report, period.
Yeah, and we have conducted a downtown transportation survey for downtown employees in 2020 and 2022, and a large percentage of respondents said that they would bike if there were protected facilities. So we know that that's already something that people want, and we are starting to implement that. So some of these things are in development.
Protected like bike facilities?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
We are officially out of time, and we have a meeting ahead of us. Thank you both. Did you get the feedback that you needed for tonight?
I think so.
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, we did. Thank you.
Future discussions to come. Thank you both for your time. We will adjourn and commence the business meeting at seven o'clock.